Sorry, that's not correct.
That's just your idea.
We said in the bill.
It's like sexy.
I made them.
Johnson, you have to be calm when I ask.
I'll speak to her.
Talk to me.
You're going to talk to each other.
And this was.
Oh, thanks, Mr. Brooke. Thank you, Master.
Hello.
Supervisor. Somebody say hi. How are you? How you doing, man? How's the bound?
And you feel better.
Yeah. What is this?
Okay, I've got some of that. Give me twice.
Yeah.
I hear a bit. You want to keep on the. Yeah. Please.
Yeah. There's a raffle. I'm what it says.
And you can I. Has like.
Yeah.
So we're not just. Later. But it's all good tomorrow. Yeah. We did. I don't want it. Just do a screen. Check on you. Oh, it's. I changed that. Yeah.
This is.
Yeah. I hear you there, number. No, I don't need. Oh, clear the store. You mean. Didn't have cell phones when I grew up. Or they're connected or Google. E-Quand three. Nothing.
You're a little grown up, Tim.
Yeah. And I ain't that stuff. We. Running that nothing looks up. So we're hopefully right.
Okay.
Change with that. Tell me. Well.
So I'm learning one time was thought about as a lesions.
Yeah. Take it. That is. A place to be. Because of Black Power. The United States of America. And through the Republic, for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. You're not going to do a moment for Ozzy and then.
Whoa, and Hulk. We must hope today.
The Hulk.
And Ozzy.
Oh, he's just here.
We'll take a moment of silence for Avi Aspar. And Hulk Hogan revisited town of Walk Hill back in March.
And Chuck Mangio.
Chuck Mangio.
Chuck. When?
Trump today. Oh, man.
Really?
And a member of Golden Earring too, which was.
Wow.
And Malcolm. And Malcolm.
My mother, my mother, my mother.
He's alive, man. Moment silence.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's family dinner. Focus on where it was. Excuse me.
Okay. We have public hearing, MS four. Um, we'll start with the reading of the notice, now.
Notice that right in the public hearing, we held by the town of Walk Hill on July twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. At seven twenty five, we had a walkout town on ninety nine town. To receive public input and comment regarding the town's MS four annual report. Interim progress certification and stormwater management program for the twenty twenty five calendar year. Any resident of town of Walkers to have to be heard on said MS four annual report of interim progress certification. And stormwater management program at such public hearing copies. All relevant documents are available for review at Walkham Town Hall, ninety nine town. Town will make every effort to ensure the hearing is accessible for persons with disabilities. Anyone who party special assistance at no reasonable combination should contact the town clerk. But in the town board, the town will help it, we say, best in town clerk.
Oh, note for the record, Mr. Supervisor, the public hearing notice was posted and published in accordance with the law. Thank you.
Thank you. So the town has always had an MS four. And there's been some changes. And one of the things that eventually we're going to have in town, we'll be able to have a mapping system. Where we're going to document every stormwater management agreement we have. Every storm drain, every covert. And the direction of the way the water flows. Um, so we did get a grant to create that type of mapping. And hopefully we'll have that um in place. Um, so anyone wants to speak on this, please come up and state your name.
Mr. Supervisor.
Yes.
May I suggest that we have Mr. Fritz just give a quick one or two minute summary of the contents of the report before anyone is invited for coming?
Yes. So lucky for us, we have our stormwater guru. Um, from M A G. Uh, Dave Fritz, who will come up and.
Sure.
Give us a synopsis of what we're doing.
Sure. What do you want me here? Are you in public? Yes.
Right at the mic.
Okay.
You can turn it on. Green.
There's.
There you go.
Facing the board or facing the public?
Face the board.
Okay.
So thank you very much and Mr. Supervisor, Dan Clerk. Um, as was reported, this is a public hearing to solicit um public comments on the. Stormwater management plan and the annual report. Um, I guess just very briefly, um stepping back a little bit. The um, um, the D E C quite some time ago designated the town. As uh as an MS four, um, the supervisor referred to the town as an MS four. For those of you who don't know, an MS four stands for municipal separate storm sewer system. Um, in general, what that means is that the town is a public entity that has a stormwater or drainage collection system. That collects and conveys and then discharges stormwater to the waters of the U S. Uh, the main intention of the MS four designation and the D E C permit refund. Is to minimize pollutants that get discharged into, excuse me, into the waters of the of the U S. Um, associated with that. There are, uh, there's an annual permit. But the town is um responsible for adherence to. And there's a lot of requirements in there. But two of the main requirements um of that permit is one. The creation and maintenance of a stormwater management plan, which is a very voluminous document, but. Included in that are the policies and procedures and protocols that the town utilizes to. Manage stormwater and to comply with the Department of Conservation's permit requirements. Um, and then the second element is the filing of an annual permit. With the D E C that occurs in April of every year. Um, both the stormwater management plan and the annual report have been created. They have been filed. Um, they are also on file in the town clerk's office and can be um viewed by the public. They are also on the town's website. Um, under the MS four section, there is a link that we've created in the MS four section. That allows for the public to go in and ask questions and look into things and. Post comments, et cetera. Um, and then that takes us back to. The public hearing, which is another way that we are trying to solicit public comment specifically tonight. In regards to the stormwater management plan and the annual.
I'll also note, Mr. Supervisor, that if we do have any public comment or comments from the board. The board does not need to take any actions. These are just comments to incorporate into the report that's being filed. And there's nothing the board needs to do other than hear it from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone? Anyone? That's recording. All good. Thank you. I'm doing mountain.
Good. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
Note, just something we need to do.
I'm good. I'm kind of looking forward to have this mapping system in place because. It definitely is going to help the town being able to see all this. Everywhere in the town where there's water, the stormwater is going and helps with the D E C going forward, so. Um, anyone else? I make motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Seven thirty seven.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Harry.
Thank you, Dave.
God, Dave.
Next, we have a presentation about one of our good partners in the community. Um, who does a lot of outreach with our seniors. Um, J F S of Orange County and we've been having a whole little presentation.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Um, greetings to my hometown board, so. It's always good to to be here to be able to share about. What we're doing in J F S and all of our programs. I just wanted to, I do have a presentation. You can just go back one slide, Larry. That'd be great. Thank you. Um, just so you know, our doors are open to the entire community. Jewish Family Services rooted. Here in the town of Walk Hill, but we have a long history in Orange County. Um, forty years plus in Orange County. And we have actually partnered with several community organizations, uh, the first being. Over that forty years, uh, with all of the good work that we were doing. As a Jewish based organization, Officer the Aging. Partners with us and has partnered with us for many years now. Um, I'm going to guess it's probably about twenty. I should have gotten that exact number, but around twenty years. To provide the Senior Independence Program Counseling Services and Case Management in Orange County. Uh, we are also partnering with Lizzie Care, that is our newest partner for dementia care. Um, we also partner with Hudson Valley Carers Coalition to provide services and outreach. For those with Medicaid, which is something that was a a community that we weren't able to serve previously. National Volunteer Care Network is our national organization. I'm actually the New York representative. For the National Volunteer Care Network because we do it right. Um, and we train other volunteer care networks and programs all around the country to uh to provide services the way we do. Um, and we also are very thankful to Jewish Federation of Great Orange County for the service. That they provide in our county and also their partnership. So thank you. Um, you can continue. Thank you. Um, the town of Walk Hill Friendly Visitor Program has been in existence since uh the uh year two thousand and nineteen. It is, it's a poetic partnership. We support neighbors throughout Orange County, uh, but. We also partner with a total of eight municipalities. So we have partners in Blooming Grove, Cornwall, Montgomery. Town of Newburgh, Walk Hill, Warwick, Goshen, and Chester. Our newest partners are Chester and Goshen. We are growing those programs, um, similar to the way we kind of built uh the town of Walk Hill. Um, just from the bottom up, supporting neighbors reaching out in the community, just and continual ongoing outreach. Uh, when we get a call at J F S, it's usually, I don't know if you could help me. People find us when they need help. Uh, and we go through an an intake. Program, so our anybody who's calling the program is going to go into an intake with a. Person who is going to take some information over the phone, and then we do a home visit to make sure that we're meeting all of the needs. We're checking to make sure the spaces are safe for those people to live in, and if they're not, we're going to address that. And if they are safe, then we know that they're safe for them, and they're also safe for volunteers and our staff to go in. So the home visit and that intake is very important. We also provide valuable training to our volunteers to know what to expect and what to look for. So because they're what we consider boots on the ground, so they're going to be out there continually serving and supporting. Oh, boy. There we go. So what we like to, um, our services are a coordinated system of services. The Senior Independence Program. Um, down at the bottom, you can see, um, just, uh, thanks, Larry, appreciate it. Four hundred and twenty three neighbors throughout Orange County. Currently, these are our twenty twenty four numbers. Two hundred and seven volunteers. This equals nine thousand nine hundred and sixty two volunteer hours that our senior independence program is providing. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Case management is, we have a hundred and thirty seven clients and group counseling and counseling individually, a hundred and four clients. And our financial empowerment supported twenty one recipients last year. So our senior independence program, that's where our partnership is uh with the town of Walk Hill. The um, the Friendly Visitor Program, we've transitioned names to the Senior Independence Program because it really speaks to what we do. Number one, we're providing transportation to valuable transportation to essential appointments and. Not only medical appointments, but social opportunities as well. We have volunteers who will take our neighbors to a doctor's appointment, but we also have volunteers that will take our neighbor to the senior center. To participate in an activity. And that's important because socialization is so important. That's what our friendly visitor. Component of our senior independence program provides. We're also providing food security. Uh, food security, we're providing grocery shopping support, either a neighbor getting help going to the grocery store or just. Um, having somebody go to the store for them, pick up their food, bring it back. Um, actually shop for them. And we also partner with pantries throughout Orange County to provide food that is subsidized. To our neighbors as well, so our volunteers are doing pickups and deliveries on food from food pantries as well to ensure that. Um, to ensure that food security. Uh, all services are provided at no cost, and that is because of our wonderful partners, thankfully, and our amazing volunteers that do this for us. All right, case management, the town of Walk Hill currently, we have twelve clients receiving case management. This is a transition, so think about a pyramid. When we start to age, you know, and we we just did a moment of silence for some of our baby boomers that passed in Gen X, right? That's kind of where we are right now, um, as a county. We are an aging county, and we know that as we age, we're going to need a little bit of extra help. So our case management is going to help with transitions. Support for family caregivers. Uh, help with memory, um, memory issues when you're, when you have a loved one who. Is starting to show signs of dementia for whatever reason. We partner with Alzheimer's Association and our newest partner, Lizzie Care. Uh, we're also supporting Holocaust survivors in the community. We have nineteen Holocaust survivors that we're supporting throughout Orange County. Um, some of them right here in the town of Walkham. Um, thank you. All right. Um, counseling, uh, counseling, you, we're really proud of our counseling program here in Walk Hill because we do provide. Group counseling to a number of our senior, uh, senior living centers. So it's a great opportunity for seniors to come together, talk a little bit with a therapist. As a group, and we're also doing private one on one counseling as well. We can do that counseling in our office by telehealth, and we even have a little sort of setup, a beautiful area. In our office, if anybody wants to do it in person, these services are also all free of charge. So everything I've spoken about, there is no cost. Um, if somebody wants to continue with um with counseling, they can. We do accept. Uh, some insurances if they want to continue uh with with their therapist, but. Usually it's about an eight week program. All right, you can continue. Thank you. We also provide financial empowerment. Uh, we have four recipients in the town of Walk Hill who needed help. This kind, this is help that is a one time support. It's limited in funds. It's also a, um, it it's a, so one time limited funds for either. And a utility bill, a car repair, something to do with. If, you know, they've got a plan in place, but they just need a little extra help to get them over, uh, get them through to help make it. Thank you. Uh, we also support veterans. We can be very proud of our veterans in Orange County, and we are currently serving thirty veterans. And a hundred one veteran dependents. That's broken down here on this slide. Um, we serve differently abled adults and children. Our Kids Connect camp has founded a home at the uh the Surpherville, at the, at Surpherville Park. We're very. Happy to be able to do that. This year we are on hiatus. We had some changing in staff and just um. Not able to provide that camp this year, but we are on on target for next year, hoping that it will be bigger and better. Um, our Roots Program, one of our two Jewish based programs, is a program for adults with disabilities. Who will come to a program, uh, it's a eight week program twice a year. Uh, held at Temple Sinai in Middletown and um those with uh. Wanting to connect with the Jewish religion, just learn a little bit about it. We have a social program. Um, so that is one of our, the the Roots Program and the Holocaust Survivor Support are the two main Jewish programs. Everything we do is founded on the Jewish principle of repairing the world, and we see Orange County as our part of the world.
Definitely need more of that.
What?
Definitely need more of that.
We do, we do. It's called Takuna La, repairing the world. That's the, that's the word. But we really could use your help. Um, we want to make sure that our seniors know about the program, where to look for services when they need it. Uh, so I go to many different service organizations. I go Shaver of Commerce, uh, senior clubs, local hospitals, the. Um, schools, the school districts, uh, so other social service agencies, um, houses of worship. This is, um, the outreach is what's going to help us to build support for our seniors. And also when we're looking to build support for our seniors, we know that there are people out there who want to help. And build their community, and this is how we get community involvement, right? We want to build. Uh, awareness about our community, teach people about the people that live here. Our seniors have our wonderful source of history for us, and these relationships are really so meaningful. Uh, so we really want to build awareness. So anywhere you go. For meetings or sharing with our police departments and our fire departments and our EMS, and. We want to be a part of that, just to share the information so they know this is where you get the help that you need. And if you need us, this is where we are. We're right on uh seventeen M, seven twenty, seventeen M. We're just near um, near Dogwood Acres, uh, right across the street, actually, from the, right around the corner from the new Stewart. And these are our contacts if you need us. Uh, this uh, this uh presentation is in your hands, so you have it. I don't know where you need it.
Paul, I have a question. Do you, do you guys do anything with the summer programs for kids that, you know, like we have something here, summer meals. Um, New York for kids that need those meals during the, during the summer days that they're not in school, do you connect with those?
We, no, we, our focus right now is mainly on seniors sixty and above, um, except for. We don't. Our focus right now is mainly on seniors sixty and above, except for our Kids Connect program, which has been in existence for, since two thousand and ten. So that is the only program we're focusing on with children.
And do you partner with Access at all?
We have, we do partner with Access. We have a group volunteer shoppers that help us with some of the day hat programs through some of our agencies here in the Town of Walk Hill. So yes.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Any other questions I can answer?
I can't read your email address without that. Yeah, I have your first initial, last name.
Okay, that's P Bloomingow at J F S orange dot word.
J F F orange dot word.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll give you my card.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone?
Well, thank you so much for your partnership. We can't do what we do without you.
I just want to say thank you for J F S and the volunteers because this is only works with volunteers. And I've had the opportunity to attend some events with J F S where they're honoring their volunteers and to see the people there who are getting help is just amazing. And, you know, we live in a world in two thousand and twenty-five where people do not want a volunteer, and now we do have people wanting to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we can find a place for anybody. You don't have to, you don't have to dedicate your life to it. It's a couple hours a month. It could be an hour a week, a few minutes a week. It's totally up to you. We will find something for you to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the town has always been, since I've been in office, recognizing small businesses in the town. And it came to me recently that we had a small business that's been around for over thirty years. And it's important that us as a town do recognize our small businesses along with the big businesses that we have because, you know, the town was built on small businesses, and we have to recognize that. So in honor of the thirty years they've been in business, Town of Walk Hill would like to recognize Grand Slam Pizza, Dennis and Nicole Leek. Please step up.
Thank you.
It's on him.
I want to thank the board for recognizing us at the Grand Slam. Starting out as a twenty-six-year-old kid, it was kind of scary getting into the business like this. I didn't think I was going to be here for thirty years. I grew up in the Town of Walk Hill, played in Town of Walk Hill Little League, went to Pine Bush, graduated Pine Bush, graduated from Ohio. So a local guy that just wanted to create a business for myself and give back to the community a little bit. So and then this Sunday, we're doing a community party, free pizza, wings, hot dogs, hamburgers, soft drinks and beer. Would you have to? Victor Argus is DJing, so you know a little bit about it. We have Bud Light, we have Budweiser, yeah. Don't eat it stuff from Pepsi.
Lack of activities for kids to do.
Does everyone know where they're located? You know, the real two. Trying to make sure, even for the camera, people get, I know they're located around the real two, that's the Circleville Firehouse. So, congrats.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Congrats.
Thank you. Somebody else wants to take a picture.
They also have really great bark fingers there.
If I could just add to the accolades there. That is also a big sponsor of local sports teams, school events, and fundraisers, and was also one of the Hudson Valley's Best Wings in two thousand and eight. So, congrats.
Okay, next we got public participation on agenda items only. Come up.
Is that, I'm sorry, does that mean anybody from the public that has?
Yes, on agenda items only.
Oh, we said, oh, okay.
Anything that's on the agenda.
There's another public comment period at the end.
Everyone on Zoom? Okay, move on. Man, can you correspondants?
No.
Thank you. And plug, you want to start with resolutions?
Resolution regarding the Town of Walk Hill, Orange County, or Town of Walk Hill wastewater treatment plant upgrades. Therefore, may it resolve the Town of Walk Hill authorizes the undertaking of the project if the total cost of the project is seven million nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Expenditures for the project, obligation of funds necessary to meet any required local match, including any cash and or in-kind services, and when applicable, the submission of an application for financial assistance. And resolve that the town supervisor is designated authorized to execute a grant agreement with N Y S E F C and any and all other contracts, documents, and instruments necessary to work about the project and to fulfill the town's obligations under the W two A grant agreement. And resolve that the town supervisor is designated is authorized to execute expenditures for the project under the New York State E F C's W two A program on behalf of the Town of Walk Hill. The resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. You have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Seron.
He told me that. Yes.
Thank you.
Just for the record, Ben, the abbreviation, and we, it's for Water Infrastructure Improvement and inter municipal water infrastructure grants. These are grants that the town applies for with the New York State E F C, which is the Environmental Facilities Corporation. And this project total, a lot of it's going to be from grants. And when project moves forward, there will be public bidding processes as required for all of the work necessary. Thank you.
Resolution, the Town of Walk Hill authorizes the transfer of funds. Hereby resolve, the Town Board hereby authorizes and directs the Town Council to let her transfer funds with respect to the twenty twenty five, like this follows. From D A five one one two dash four six one two three, dated threeish, twelve thousand dollars to D A dash five one three zero dash four one. Machinery supplies and materials, twelve thousand dollars. This transfer adjusts the funds necessary to repair the infected trail. May I motion?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Coy?
Yep.
Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Seron.
Yes.
Resolution, the Town of Walk Hill authorizes the town supervisor to enter into an agreement for control of snow and ice on certain county roads for the twenty-five, twenty-six winter season pursuant to Article five G of the Jalen Municipal Law. Therefore, let hereby be resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Walk Hill hereby authorizes the town supervisor or his designated representative to enter into an agreement with the County of Orange for control of snow and ice roads on certain county roads for the twenty-five, twenty-six winter season upon the terms and conditions of that agreement, subject to approval by the town attorney. May I motion?
So move. Second.
Mr. Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Seron.
Yes.
It's the same thing.
It's good catch.
Resolution, the Town of Walk Hill approving the performance surety bond and construction inspection escrow to be posted for the Rossi filling station and can be next door. Hereby resolve, the Town Board of the Town of Walk Hill hereby approves the following. Performance surety bonds, one million four hundred and eighty-five thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. Construction inspection escrow, fifty-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. And be it for the resolve, the Town Board shall accept such performance bond and construction inspection escrow proportion upon the new approval of the form of contents of same by the town attorney and the town's consulting engineer. May I motion?
So move. Second.
Mr. Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Seron.
Yes.
That's all I have.
No. I want.
Resolution, the Town Board of the Town of Walk Hill authorizing the supervisor to solicit bids for ambulance services on behalf of the Town of Walk Hill Ambulance District. It's all the follows, the Town Board of the Town of Walk Hill hereby authorizes and directs the town supervisor to solicit proposals from interested providers of ambulance services on behalf of the Town of Walk Hill Ambulance District, and to thereafter report back to the Town Board with the results of said bids, which shall be opened on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. May I motion?
So move. Discussion.
Okay, Will, I didn't see it. I might have missed it. Is?
Who's second? Yes, sir.
One of the things we wanted put in here is that they had to be located in the Town of Walk Hill.
Yeah, we got the idea in the files.
Thank you.
Mr. Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Seron.
Yes. Thank you, Man Clark. Thank you. Can we start counseling or start with Nancy and Coy?
Okay, I'll start with highway. For the month of July, primary focus of the highway department has been on paving. We have completed paving on Goshen Terrify Seaman Road, Prosperous Valley Road, Pocatello Road. Almost nine thousand tons of asphalt hauled, put in place by our staff. Next area of focus will be on rolling meadows. We still have a little milling to do before we begin paving. Hoping to have it all ready to go by the end of next week. Once we finish rolling meadows, we'll be paving the two remaining milled roads in Scothtown, Dominic and Mabel. We are scheduled with the milling company the week of August twenty-fifth, starting on Heritage Crossing in Circleville. And we will be, we will finish milling in Scothtown. If we finish paving sooner than August twenty-fifth, maybe able to start milling sooner, depending on the weather and mill availability. Once this round of milling is complete, we will begin paving and hopefully wrap up by the end of September. Also, one of the three Volvo dump trucks that we have watered this year has a VIN number and is in production. We're hoping that it will get, be ready for the build shop by the end of August and hopefully be ready for the twenty-six fall season. And that reminds me, guys, we got to look into getting a letter of intent over there if the board feels like we want to go down that road. Because we'll get the same prices for the next two that we got on this one. So just, just a reminder while it's fresh in my head. Veterans Affairs, so we have a new monument going up at the moment in Memorial Park. It's for nine eleven. We have the foundation, four piece of steel is already embedded in it. We have a statue, the eagle on army boots. It's really nice. See, it, it has not been set yet, but it'll be ready for September of what, September eleventh. So keep that in mind. Also, on September eleventh, and I'll say this a few more times prior to September eleventh, but all are welcome to participate. It's a memorial walk. Lineup's at five P M. At the Elks Club, forty-eight Prospect Street, Middletown. Step off at six and a walk to Veterans Memorial Park, which is right across from Matty's diner where all of our monuments are. And the ceremony that we always do every year will then take place. So something new to the night. So we'll see how that goes and see how many people do the walk. Let's see here. Comments, I got a bunch of comments, so bear with you guys. The rail trail, so the rail trail is open, right? Not yet complete in the sense that we have benches that we're going to be putting along it. And also, we wanted to, wanted to put like an arch or maybe even a square, depending on what we, we decide on at the entrance and with the name of the trail on there. I put something up on Facebook. And I ran these names by the whole board. So no surprise, but did like a little poll. The Milk Trail got twenty-eight votes, the Circleville Trail got twenty-five votes, and then Freedom Trail got nine. So I'm thinking, you know, you could name it the Circleville Milk Trail and kind of combine the two top vote getters, but we'll talk about that, right? What else have we got? Fireworks were great, as always. The Drone Show was awesome. Fourth of July Parade is always exciting, beautiful day we had for it this year. Oh, and August fifth, Night Out Against Crime. That's always very, very popular with the, with the residents. That starts at six and is over at nine P M. All right, two things to touch on here. We have a referendum vote on Tuesday. That is eight A M. to eight P M. In this building, actually, this room only. Your normal polling site will not be open. This is the only place to vote. It's whether or not we keep a third judge position. And that's how the referendum will read, the very last line will ask you that question. Do you support a third judge? Yes or no? We've all made our, our case of why we're voting no, you're voting yes, what have you. I believe, you know, it's not necessary, and I'd like to take that money and use it elsewhere. But everybody can, you know, come here again between eight and eight and, and vote. The other thing I wanted to touch on, and this is big, this has been something that's, you know, it's a little tough when you're when people say stuff on social media, knock on doors, and say things that aren't true. You know, we're, we're a small community and, you know, I bump into people, you know, just like you do in the store and restaurants and everywhere else. And, you know, it's tough when you sit up here and you know things and you can't say it. But you know what? That time's over, and now I can. So I'm going to. In March of two thousand and twenty, it was said that there was money missing. There were claims that the comptroller was stealing, that the town board was covering it up. The next two years, this small group of people were very loud and demanded that New York State come down here and audit our books. Well, they got their wish. New York State came down and audited, audited the books. Our comptroller left about a week into it. She'd gotten a new job, job she actually was offered a year prior. But they had to hold off on staffing it because they didn't have the funds. That swirled up the accusations again. Okay? So the audit was done. They found no. They found no. No employee. No elected official stole any money. No attempt. Was made to steal any money. Okay? Just as. Two months ago. Somebody was spouting on social media that there's thirty million dollars missing. That person's running for supervisor this year. That's the person who started this five years ago. He knocks on your door and tells you that there's any money missing. Ask him where the proof is. Where's the proof? What did happen is eight months ago in the middle of the audit. The auditor himself. Helped himself to our money. Okay? Stole four hundred plus thousand dollars, or how he thought he was gonna get away with it. Why he did it, but he did it. So basically, and you can't make this up. You ask for people to come down and audit our books because we're stealing. They find out no one's stealing, but the people who are supposed to be doing the job end up stealing from us. Supervisor got that money back, I would say, within a month, three weeks. Right? So the town has been made whole. We have every single penny that we should have. The 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 lies have to stop. You know, i- I mean, I guess, listen, you're running for president. You're running for, you know, U S Senate or something. I I, you know, I get it, but you know what? I will see some of you out in the public. You will, you know what I mean? Like. I- it's not right. It's not right to. Try and tear somebody down. For five years. They've called some people's jobs and tried to get them in trouble. Okay? It's nonsense. I hope, I hope that it's over now. Not one penny, not one penny is missing. But for five years up until about two months ago, and I, you know, I haven't seen it since this came out, you know. What the story's gonna be, but. I just wanna, I just wanna lay that out there. That, you know, it's tough. It's tough when when you know stuff and you can't share it because there's an investigation going on. Right? And you kind of gotta just sit there and bite your tongue and and listen to the, you know. But it's over now and and I'm I'm willing to talk about any aspect of it. I mean, I I just gave you the Cliff Notes. I I can go on up here for two hours. Thank you.
Hold on, Mark. I do have to correct you. There is some money missing. The three hundred thousand dollars we had to pay to settle a lawsuit. I don't forget that.
Yeah. Well, that's not missing. That's been. That's been handed over. Gotcha. Thank you.
You give councilman coin? Appreciate it. Thank you, supervisor. Start from my parks report. All spraying of our town parks grounds will be completed in the next day or two. Our clean sweep staff has located some illegal dump sites which have been boarded and the sites were cleaned. Clean sweeps has has collected three hundred and thirty-two bags. Or roadside litter to date as of March thirty-first being current. Um within that period, we're currently replacing all faded damaged signage in our parks and town facilities. Our stage trailer has been updated and with new decals. Um as mentioned before, our Fourth of July celebration is a great success. Um. Big credit and thanks to our parks department um with. The amount of work that they did, labor invested with mowing, adding light towers, high and with the highway department as well. Um also moving the trash receptacles onsite and putting up safety barriers for all the residents. Four hundred and sixty yards of certified playground mulch is scheduled to be delivered next week and will be spread on. Dog park slipper go playground patio Belmont, Mar- Marlboro and Sarah Lane. And the other parks as needed. This is equivalent to almost five tractor trailers of full mulch, full of mulch rather. New blackout window shades have been installed at a community center along with a new stainless steel toilet paper dispenser. Next week starts the s- the. Starts the construction for the replacement of building a sidewalk and retaining wall. All the following tasks are still being performed daily such as mowing, garbage removal, bathroom cleaning, raking. All fields, um our beach and volleyball courts. Next, we will be preparing the grounds at our Little League Park for the National Night Out Against uh National Night Out Event. And along with that. Our national event, this is the twenty-third year, will be um having it Tuesday, August fifth. At six to nine P M at the Town of Waukegan Little League Park. Food, free food and ice cream, games, music and entertainment, police and fire vehicle displays. Fun for the entire family, D J, M C, face painting, prizes and giveaways. And a fifty fifty at the Police Community Council tent will be available. And this is all free to the residents and the kids um that come to it. It's a family friendly event, free to all. You have any questions? Please call six nine two, six seven five seven, you know, please they can answer. Any questions you have about the event. Also, free T-shirts to the first eight hundred people in attendance. They go fast. Yes, they do. Hey, well, police report staffing. Well, police, we're at fifty-four full-time sworn police officers. Arrest record are down. Arrest for twenty twenty-five was. We're down sixteen percent over twenty twenty-four. Buck and summonses are down as well from twelve ninety-four for twenty twenty-five versus twenty-one twenty-six for twenty twenty-four. Police Community Council meeting will be held on Thursday, August seventh and will be held at the Town of Waukegan Community Center. The next youth coalition meeting is scheduled for August nineteenth at seven P M. Our Mary Olsen Memorial Cops versus Youth Software Game Softball Game is scheduled. Um for Sunday, August tenth. Who's pitching that game chief?
I believe the police chief is the starting pitcher for the um police department. We're not sure who it's gonna be for the um. You, maybe somebody from the Yankees.
Who's calling balls and strikes?
I believe we're gonna have the town supervisor umpiring here and he has a lot of experience doing it, so we're going to um. Going to defer to his experience as an umpire and.
Oh, my God.
Hoping for the best.
And that's free for everyone. Okay, as mentioned, National Night Out, August fifth at the Town of Waukegan Little League. Um as you're aware, we are a credit agency, so let me just give an update on the twenty twenty-five goals. The department has established goals and objectives at the beginning of this year, the chief reviewed last year's goals. And identify the goals and objectives for twenty twenty-five. At the halfway point, I share the following updates on this year's goals and objectives. Amend the Town of Waukegan Police Department Organization chart carryover from twenty twenty-four. A review of the organization chart disclosed that amendments are necessary to improve the workflow and oversight. The process to review and amend the organization chart amends commenced in twenty twenty-four but was not completed. After a series of meetings, the chief and the town board reorganized the command structure for the department. Consequently, the organization chart will be amended in twenty twenty-five. Number two, acquire, implement new records management system, the R M S system carryover from twenty twenty-four, the R M S. Which used to be impact was deemed inaccurate for involving needs of the Town of Waukeg Police Department. In twenty twenty-four, the Town of Waukeg Police Department entered into an agreement to adopt NISH R M S. As our new R M S system. The vendor was unable to tailor the software to meet the needs of the department. To date, several agencies have successfully implemented NISH R M S. We anticipate that this will be implemented here in the coming months. Is anticipated that NISH R M S will be adopted this year. Number three, adopt new technology for the use in investigations. Acquire Keystone Precision Solutions Total Station and Laser Scanner. Then train officers in the use of the equipment. The equipment has been acquired through a grant. And specific personnels have received training in the use of the equipment. It is available for use. Firearms Training was number four. Acquire firearms training simulator, then incorporate additional firearms training utilizing the F T S. The F T S was acquired this month and training will begin soon. Number five, last but not least, design a pilot project that expands the roles of school resource officers. Hire contractors to assist in the design of the reimagined School Resource Officer Program. Potential contractors have been submitted preliminary proposals for review. The selection will commence in the near future. We anticipate having a new pilot in place by twenty twenty-six. Um for those of you that are probably aware that we all had kids, this is going to be um. The replacement or the new dare program for our schools um. Throughout offices. That's it. Backpack for Hope. Um through the Boys and Girls Club School Supplies Drive. Be part of meaningful partnership between local township businesses. And the Town of Waukeg Boys and Girls Club were gathering school supplies to fill backpacks for children in need. Throughout the Northern Orange and Southern Counties. Suggested items can be donated pens, pencils, erasers, markers, crayons, notebooks. Blue sticks, scissors, um lined notebook paper, spiral notebooks, notepads. Three ring binders and folders. Please consider donating um school supplies to this great project. Applications to receive a backpack for your child closes on August eighth. And you can reach the Boys and Girls Club at eight four five three four two eight eight three three. So my comments. Yeah, wait a minute, because I didn't write this too long ago, but. I would take a second to tell you, take a second and discuss something that happened to me this week. While I was away on a short vacation, I received a call from a resident. The resident dropped off a letter in the town. Unfortunately, I never received that letter. Things get lost and and things happen. Um the letter was requesting a bench. In her, in her nearby park in the name of her father. Um. Unfortunately, when she called me on the phone or she left the message. Um she was obviously um upset that. You know, and got back to her within a uh within the last few weeks and she wanted to know. Now, this was the first message I got from her. Um she wanted to know um why it was taking so long and she was frustrated. Um the thing here is the message that she left me on the phone. Where she expressed her frustration that no one called her back and she wanted this um simple request. Um her last comment to me was, if I'm not Spanish, I guess I don't get anything done. Or my request doesn't get fulfilled. And so I called her. And I expressed my frustration with such a faceless accusation. While we reached a fair resolution. What was troubling was that she stated she heard this accusation from other people and was just repeating what she heard. I have heard, I have served this community for almost three decades. And the whole politics is a dirty word. The last few years have been different. I've been shocked at the willingness of those running for office to relay a basis lies. Basis to rely on basis lies with the hope that spurring this hateful rhetoric will help them in November. I challenge my fellow residents to not believe everything you hear. All the mailers that come to your house. It's okay to disagree. And it's okay to question my decisions and my vote. On on things. I welcome the opportunity to express my options and explain my decisions, but I will not accept. But what I will not accept is a proliferation of more lies to win an election. Now, when I spoke with this lady, um this resident. I told her, in all my years of serving the town, almost twenty-five years. I've never, ever, ever addressed anyone by the color of their skin. By their nationality, by their religion or anything else. There were residents and and to hear this person on, I had the recording, tell me, oh, I guess if I'm not Spanish. I I don't get anything. You know, when I became a councilman. It was for this town. I was always so proud that people would talk to me and. As an individual, as a person, not by my nationality, not by my ethnic background. But by the councilman that represents them. And I've always relied on that and and dealt with people the same way. But it's gotten ugly. It's like. There's, the world is upside down. It's okay to say things like that. It's. It's like, it's okay to insult people. It's okay to make up lies. And I will tell you, I will tell you that. Where this person lives. Is the same circle where Don Saleo lives, who is running for second world councilman to replace me. She wouldn't tell me. She said she heard it from her neighbors, she heard it from other people, but she wouldn't tell me exactly who told her. I'm not saying he told her, but. I leave the butt out there. So it's shameful. It's shameful that, you know. Run for office, run on your merit, run on what you're going to do better. Or what you want to do better or what your vision is. But, you know, to walk around and and tell residents. That person's a thief, that person is no good. It it, why? Why? Let's be better than that. Let's be better than that because it has to start somewhere. It has to start somewhere. It has to stop and end. And we have to lead by examples and be better. But we're walking around on election year. Just making up lies, twisting the truth, you know, oh, it's partly true, but let's highlight it a little. Let's send out mailers saying things that, you know, may or may not be true, but. And here's the thing, and I keep hearing this. I remember um. Someone told me, it's unfortunate in politics. Things can be said. They don't have to be true. They just have to be said. And no one looks beyond those words. They just take it. Oh, I heard this, I heard that. So it it was discouraging to hear this lady leave that message to me. It was discouraging to know that there are still people out there walking around and this is the way they campaign. This is the way they talk. Um. And keep in mind, while you're doing that, it's not only us. Up here that you're affecting. It's our families. It's our kids that have to read. These Facebook things. It's our kids that have to listen to it. You're affected. These Facebook things. It's our kids that have to listen to it. You're affecting families out there. Whether you care or not, eventually it's gonna come back to you. So. Run on your merit, run on what you believe, run on what you can offer better to the town. But somehow stop the rhetoric, stop the lies, stop the twisting the truth, you know. Now, I'll take this time. My legislative opponent, okay. Sent out a mailer saying that I voted to provide lifetime benefits to me and my wife. That's a lie. That's a lie. What was voted on, and and by the way. What was there before was fifteen years. I'm twenty five years. I didn't change anything. I I have whatever benefits I retire with. But what we did on that vote was made it more restrictive. What we did on that vote was. It had to be consecutive years of service, consecutive years of service to get any benefit from the town. And and it was ten years. The county is eight years. Before it was that someone can run. Do two years, be gone for five years, come back, do another two years and say, hey, I want those two years back. Add it to this to my system. That doesn't work. We made it more restrictive. Keep in mind, I have twenty five years. It didn't matter to me either way, but it was a better move for the town. Last but not least, the other thing I I would say is that um. These people that walk around saying things and and posting stuff. Slander is slander. And we as elected officials. Are not free from slander, but we as elected officials can take that slander and bring you to court. This is one thing these people. I guess they don't realize. They think that we can just take it in chin and not do anything with it. Well, I've done, I've spoken to lawyers, I've spoken to and and done my research. If you you make a statement and it's unfounded and cannot be proven against the person you're making that statement to. Whether they're elected official or not, it's slander and you can be taken to court and sued. Um. We voted tonight for an RFP for ambulance. We have. A see, a huge amount of seniors that live in our community, right, Paula? And they're in need of a lot of things, a lot of things. And one of the main things that they they are afraid of is that. There is no ambulance service in the town after January. We've met with the county after January, this. Our ambulance system, they're back there um. They can't run. So the town has put together this RFP. To get funding and get the ambulance system going. Now that's gonna cost money and that's gonna cost money to the taxpayer. So we have to do our due diligence and sometimes we have to pull the Band-Aid off and it hurts a little here and there. So what they did, what the town board did. So they they found a savings in the judge and they removed a judge. And so as as Councilman Coin said, there's a referendum on that. But. The reason for the removal of that was to manage the funds that we have coming in and out. And move those funds, think about from Peter to Paul. And hopefully that makes a difference to our town and our seniors and our residents. The last thought I will leave you is that, yes. The controller came. They audited the books. I was requested of them. They were here a long time. They took everything. They took books, they took. Computers, they took documents. No money has been stolen from this town. No money was missing. No funds have been managed in a different way. There were no two books being managed. Those are statements that were made. There were. There is no collusion. So. It's unfortunate. That the people that the state hires to do this stuff. You know, I question how well were they vetted and this and that. I'm still waiting for the apology from the state because, you know, this all blew up. And I will say another thing is that there has been no money missing from the town in the last, you know, it's a it. I I read that there is, it it's money missing from town has been ongoing for years, for years. There was an individual that said that we have thirty million dollars missing. We have an operating budget of thirty three million dollars. We must be doing amazing job if we're missing thirty million dollars and we're running the town with three million dollars. The other thing is, how do you hide that? How do you hide four million dollars? How do you hide all that money that's missing? And the state controller investigators can't find it, but these individuals that are posting rhetoric. On Facebook and every every place else. They can find it. They know where it is. But again, does not have to be true, just has to be said. So. I ask. That the next time. Someone comes knocking to your door. The next time someone posts something, look beyond it, ask the question. Ask for validation. Challenge what is being said in front of you and know the people that they're talking about. You know, we're up here, we serve the town. We honorably serve the town for the right reasons to serve and. And do our civic duty to all our residents. We all have very good jobs. Beautiful families. We don't want to risk anything like what they're saying. So just know the next time someone knocks on your door and makes those negative comments. Makes those derogatory comments, question it. We should question everything. Question us. You hear something call us, challenge us. But don't take it for word. Don't take it just because it's being said. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Mallonton, Governor of Will State. Senator Johnson.
Thank you Supervisor. So for the Building Department, a hundred and seventy seven permits. Eighty six certificates issued, toll fees collected seventy five thousand ninety one dollars. Adjust forty nine complaints, carry out thousand inspections. I had a conversation with a building inspector. Usually our numbers are closer to a hundred thousand per year. Or per month, I mean, and he said that a lot of people are holding back from major projects just because of the uncertainty in the economy. Um, and with the cost of things. So there might be some, we had to look for a bunch of season. Little less money in that one. The assessment report for July, the final assessment report has been filed with the state and county as of July first. The assessment roll is available to the public on the town and county websites. The assessor has supplied the school and fire districts with all values for their upcoming budgets. Small claims assessment review and certiary filings are to be filed with county clerk and assessor. Members of the assessment staff have recently completed state education classes at Cornell. And they all passed with high honors. So congratulations to those members and you creating is always will. Uh, the summer intern Juliana. Is working diligently on assisting assess with archiving records and learning the inner workings of the department. She's been a welcome and a great asset to the office. She's former student, I just rate her too. Uh, the New York State Department of Tax and Finance Finance will start mailing out the STAR credit checks at the end of August. Um, that's for everybody that is eligible to receive one. Anyone who's not registered in New York State with SAR. Uh, credit you should do so by contacting the state. It's five one eight four five seven two zero three six. Water and sewer was kind of a busy month. Uh, there were five service leaks. They actually pulled uh some. Issues with roadways during repairs. Uh, several significant water main breaks the last few weeks alone. Uh, three were from aging infrastructure valves, hardware and things like that that needed to be replaced. And those. Did require. An interruption in service, unfortunately. There was a major one on two eleven where a contractor drilled through a water main. And the water and sewer crews were out all night getting out of the pair. It literally worked over like almost thirty hours straight. So great job by all those that took care of that. The water meter project shouldn't be starting shortly. The contractors tying up some loose ends. Excuse me, all um residents and commercial properties will receive postcards from the contractor. National meter in service to schedule appointments. They will need access to a meter. So if it's inside the house, you can have to. Don't throw that hard when I actually call and schedule appointment. It's not just junk mail. Um, they'll start with a commercial and then the ones are influential. And again, this will ensure that there's no issues with the new software system for billing. And if you have any questions, please call Water Park and Office. The Tower Drive Water Tank Rehabilitation Project is ongoing. Um, you can see there's scaffolding and cleansing right out there where they're working. Movement slows and whenever there's rain, it starts to sandblast and paint, but uh it is moving forward. The Bray Side Well Rehabilitation Project is in full swing. One of the, or the first of the three wells that need to be replaced is actually in and done. So that's a good thing. Again, this is an important step in addressing the total trihalomethanes and haliocyanic acid fives. Uh, concerns you've already mentioned before, and we start to send those letters out to the residents because we exceeded the uh. Viscible limits of the chlorinated byproducts. The town wells are actually in okay shape. The water table is a little lower than normal. Um, if you've noticed, we haven't had any real significant heavy rain, uh multiple day saturation rain events. So if that continues, um it would be in your best interest to, you know, avoid any unnecessary water usage outside like water in your lawn or something. It'll turn brown, it'll go dormant, but it will turn green again as soon as it rains. You don't have to water your lawn and then you don't have to mow it. So it's kind of a win win. Um. The wastewater treatment upgrade project is for the most part done. And um as always, the operation maintenance of those departments is twenty four hours a day, three sixty five days a year. So a great job by everyone that makes that happen. So comments, um you heard a lot tonight. I don't wanna beat all that up again, but uh let me just start with a congratulations to the grand slam. If you have not been there for food and drink, it's a great place to visit right in Circleville. Um, since I was a kid and spending business, so highly recommend going there. The National Night Out, again, you heard that mentioned also Tuesday, August fifth, six to nine, the Little League Field. That's always a great event. I heard the chief is gonna be providing helicopter rides for the first fifty people. But he's piloting, so it might not harm his own. Um, I think it's actually helicopter rides and parachuting like that. I'm not sure.
I I believe it's a licensed pilot.
Oh, so it's not you flying? Um, and I do just wanna say, you know, to all of our town employees that make us shine. It's not us up here to do anything other than make decisions and try and do our best to help the community we live in. But it's everybody in the town of Walker that does a great job. You know, I would guys without paying against crazy heat. Water and sewer guys are working all night getting your water back in line. Um, you know, the park guys are doing what they gotta do and gals to make everything ready for them to go to the park and if you rent a um, you know, a um. Thank you, man, the senior moment of pavilion, you know, everyone's clean and ready to go and um, you know, you can enjoy your time there. So. Just wanna say, you know, thank you to everybody that does that. Um. As far as comments. I do have a lot of things to say, um. But I wanna say something that really, really bothers me the most. Um, none of us up here have ever done anything except. What's best for the people that we represent. Um, what was always nice when they started. Politics didn't matter. It didn't matter what your affiliation was, didn't matter what your party was. You always did the right thing for the people that you represent. That's why we're. We don't do Democrat Republican stuff on the national level at the town. We pave your roads. You know, we make sure your taxes are good. We get a police force. When I came on ten years ago with um, well, one other member of the board, Eric's been here, I think, since the fifties um. The police force was seventeen officers, seventeen full-time officers. You know, now we've got it to fifty four. Um, and we did that all without ever having a budget above the two percent tax cap. You know, it's all done. Um, to the best of our ability and and by doing that, it made, you know, us one of the, it's the eighth safest town. Um. You know, crime is down. It's a lot of things. We we also got, you know, helped with the chief's help, I should say. You know, we're able to get the agency accredited, which is a huge, huge thing. Um, safety's big and you know, that's something that we always look forward to. Uh, the night out and you should too, because you get to meet the officers. Talk to them firsthand in a, you know, a nice environment rather than they're pulling you over and giving you a ticket. Um, you know, for driving over the speed limit or something like that. The negativity that you heard the other councilman mention has made it to the point where this job is almost unbearable. Um, you try and do your best over and over and over, year after year after year, time away from your family, not home when you should be. Having a meeting when you gotta run out and do this or a constituent calls you like, honey, I I can't go, I can't have dinner. I gotta run and talk to this guy. He's got. You know, and that's all part of the process to make your town a better place. Um, you know, so it is a civic duty. It's the same reason I chose to change careers, make a lot less money. Um, to be an educator because you can educate young children and you can change the way that they see the world. And make them better so the world will be a better place. Um, and I learned that, I have to say, from my grandfather. They recently had a ceremony um where Senator Spuffus um named Route Seventeen M in his memory. Uh, it is now the um. Richard C Dunn Memorial Highway. Um, and that was because of the atrocities he experienced when he got drafted at thirty years old with a newborn and just bought his first house. Um, and the horror that he saw in World War Two, he stormed the beach in Normandy, fought all the way into Paris. Um, you know, it was horrible. And he said to me, he said, you know. I don't know what to say. I'm not afraid to die. I know if I go to hell, it won't matter because I've already been there. He said, it can't be any worse than what I've experienced. He said it was horrible. Um, the worst thing you ever had to do is take the life of another human being that you never met, didn't want to. It was just the worst war is the worst. And he said that, you know, the reason he survived, he grew up on a farm. He was a marksman. He was able to, you know, defend himself very well with a rifle and handguns. Um, and and you know, that did bring him back, although he, you know, was actually missing in action. Resumed dead and everything worked out and you know, he he got back with a Purple Heart and all the other medals, but he said. That, you know, every day forward, all I'm going to do is look at people and find the good in them. Never gonna take a situation and focus on the negative, never gonna focus on the bad. Always look for the positive and try and bring that person up. You don't know what they're going through, but there's something positive you can see in them. Bring that out, focus on that. And I've always done that as a person because of him and um, you know, I do that every day as a teacher. I do that every time I come in here. Or when I meet with someone that, you know, I I represent and then to hear all these negative things. That other people who are running said they're faceless with no proof, no lies, that we're stealing thirty million dollars. Um, the former controller used to call me nightly. Crying in hysterics because of the nonsense that she was going through here. Um, you know, we hired an investigator to do an investigation. There's thirty pages of stuff that happened. I mean, it's unbelievable to hear it. And then this individual wants to run again for supervisor. You know, and is backed by his party, which just blows my mind. Um, blows my mind. We settled that lawsuit because our insurance company said we had to. If we went to court, it would have been a much bigger number than three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and they wouldn't have paid it. They said, if you go to court, it's a bigger number, you're on the hook for the whole thing. If you don't take this settlement that they negotiated. All right, three hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money. It really is of your money, you as taxpayers, right? And we want this person to be supervisor again? If he knocks on your door, ask him about that. I'm telling you, there's a thirty page report from a private investigator. That talks about stuff that just will blow your mind. Um, so I I can't say that, you know, I would ever support him to be in a position of power. Um, and the other people with the lies and the things that they said home, it just, it it makes it so you don't want to do this. The negatives eventually outweigh the positives and you've had enough. And you just don't want to come and do it anymore. And it's unfortunate because the times I can help somebody. Is so rewarding that, you know, here's somebody, a resident that needs your help. Well, you have the connections with the police chief. We were just talking when the meeting started. About an incident that one of my constituents had and he was filling me in how they addressed it and fixed it, problem resolved. Done with just two phone calls, you know, meanwhile, that person was at her wits end, didn't know what to do in this situation. Couldn't stand to live in her house because of what was going on. Several phone calls to me, several phone calls to the chief, back and forth, boom, problem fixed. That's why we're here. We're here for you. We're elected by you to serve you and that's what we do. You don't steal from the town. You don't take money. You don't. Do negative things to make our lives better. We give up our lives to make yours better. That's what we do here. And I have to say, you heard me at that last meeting when I asked the judge how many times they had court. Four times a month. We got three judges. They have court nine times a month. We got three judges. They have court nine times a month. Now, I probably shouldn't be saying this because it's gonna be bad, but. Nine times a month, they hold court with three judges. I think that's a little excessive. One judge could probably do nine days a month. Two could certainly do it. Nine days a month for three judges. That's why we chose to eliminate that position. When one judge said he was retiring and not running again. It's the perfect opportunity. When somebody is no longer in that position to attrition a position. I heard comments from one of the. Um, people that are running that were doing it to attack that individual. It's got nothing to do with a personality. It's got nothing to do with a person. It's doing it for the taxpayers. That two hundred and thirty thousand dollars you would save from the position can be used for the much-needed ambulance district. That Walk Hill so desperately needs. I was never a big ambulance supporter fan. If I got injured, I always drive, drive myself to the hospital or somebody will bring me back in. But recently, I had to have an ambulance take a family member on a regular basis to the hospital because they're aging. And I, I can't tell you how professional, how amazing it is to be able to make that call and within minutes, they're at your house fixing the problem and saving the day. So for me, to put that money towards the ambulance district is absolutely a no-brainer, a no-brainer. I mean, another thing we talked about, which I probably shouldn't share, is everybody's set up with a library tax. You pay three hundred dollars a year for your library tax. I don't know how many people actually use the library, but I'd like to find out. Because that number would actually cover the ambulance district.
It's five hundred. Five hundred town of Walk Hill residents have library cards. I did the research.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I don't wanna put anybody out, but I'm just saying, I think the majority of us now with the internet and everything, libraries kind of something. I have the library right here on my home. Well, we still have a library, but it would cost everybody that doesn't use it three hundred dollars a year on their taxes. But anyway, that's a discussion to have. It's an option. Um, you know, and again, you have to hear from the residents to see where that goes. But when you call an ambulance and there's one at your house in a few minutes, it's very, 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 um, refreshing to know that you're safe. Uh, we have a member here tonight that probably wouldn't be here tonight over in the corner if it wasn't for the amazing work of our ambulance crew. Um, so again, that's something that, you know, I really feel is more important than anything else at this point. Is to have ambulances in the town and if they're gone in January, um, that's certainly a problem. So, uh, again, the negativity, too much, can't stand it. You heard comments about the auditor being here. There's no missing money. There's no missing thirty million dollars. It's not happening. None of us stole thirty million dollars. Um, you know, so those comments again, ask for proof. Let me see it. Show me the numbers. Show me where the proof is. Where is the money? Thirty million dollars would mean somebody should be in handcuffs. You know, it's the one thing to say, oh, the FBI is in town. The FBI is there. The FBI is there. The FBI has never been here. There was no need. The orders didn't find. They took the computers from the staff members back to Albany. And forensically looked at them to see if there was anything. There was nothing. They brought them back. If there was a problem, they would have kept them because they would have used them as evidence. They were back within three weeks. So, um, please do your research. Vote for the person that you think is gonna do the best for you as a person. Don't pay attention to parties or anything else like that. It doesn't matter at the Walk Hill level. It doesn't. We don't do issues with abortion. We don't do issues with firearms. Those things are federal concern. There's something we don't have to deal with. Vote for the person that's gonna do right for you and hopefully they will. And we can keep Walk Hill a nice place and do like my grandfather said, look for the best in everybody. Do what's right to make the world a better place every day. Thank you.
Thank you. My turn. So, um, we got seniors. They meet on every Thursday, twelve o'clock at the community center. Um, just gonna touch again on National Night Out Against Crime, August fifth. I tried to convince the chief to get a dump tank there that day. And he was, you know, I'm pretty sure it would have been a big line if I would have got in there.
I heard you said I would go in.
Oh, okay, we're getting.
It's, it's too late. The time's actually already signed.
I, I know people.
The issue is, residents of Scottstown are so concerned about the ongoing traffic issues now with the eventual so many people that if I would have said a dump tank. The lines would go around higher Scottstown, pay a dollar to see if you can get wet, so.
Try. I, I think it's, I think it'll be great, but.
John, we got some air.
So, um, we do have the softball game, the police versus the youth on August tenth. Yes, that will be empowering. Uh, we have our community day, uh, September twentieth, from twelve to five at the Macy's parking lot. Looking forward to that. And congratulations to Grand Slam, being here all these years. Thank you to Paula and J F S for coming out. Um, couple of things I wanna talk about real quick. So, starting July thirtieth, the front of this building will be under construction. You will not be able to come in through the front. It's July thirtieth for six to eight, uh, six to seven weeks, the front of the town hall will be closed off. You will have to come in through the back, park in the back. So we'll put it out. We got a memoir. It's gonna go out to everyone. EMS, one more can we say? EMS is much needed. I kept saying this and I will keep saying it. It's, it's good to have and not need or to need and not have. So, um, something that's great. Um, voting, July twenty-ninth here. I'll keep my comments very simple, um, in regards to everything you've heard here. And you're wondering, why, why are these gentlemen upset about this? Well, they've been here longer than me and they've been dealing with this a lot longer. I've been in office three and a half years and all I hear is the same rhetoric, same rhetoric. Common sense. I, I, I just don't understand because everyone who's running for office. I got one question for each and every one of them outside of the gentleman running for supervisor. Have they ever spoken to me? Have they ever met with me? I had coffee with the supervisor. Come on and meet me. Come on and talk to me. My door is open, but yet they don't and they spread lies. The fact that here we are in twenty twenty-five and some person is willing to leave a recording. A statement, and you won't do something for me unless I'm his family. Do you understand what that means? That is the most, to say something like that. You won't do something for me because I'm his family. It's twenty twenty-five. Come on, really? And to leave it on message and to say that someone said that tonight. Stop. That, you know, like, really? Do we need that? Since I've been in office, it's been about community, diversity. Everyone is welcome. Doesn't matter if you're white, black, Hispanic, Jewish, Muslim. It's not about that. It's about doing what is best for the community. Since I've been in office, I've had to deal with this. A controller coming in, controller, town of Walk Hill resigning. And you know what? Thirty million dollars missing, then it was four million. You know what's true? Every bill's been paid. Employees have been paid and the town of Walker residents have had the same services. Actually more with things that we increase. So these people who go around running for campaign, I hear it. I'm not running. I hear it. And the things they say about me. And I asked the people, they tell me, did you ask them, why would they say that? Do they know me? Have they spoken to me? That's why I take it personal because they made comments about me. And I'm doing bad things at town hall, but they got this thing called the ring and it records. It records and things are recorded. It's not a hearsay. I got ears. Thank, thank God they're still good and I can hear it. So today, when I got home, I got a flyer. Okay, about the judge. Now I'm gonna speak about it because there are lies on that flyer. They are lies. We hired two police officers. Yes, we did. They were in the budget for twenty-five. Budget for twenty-six is not done. The sitting judge that's retiring, it's in the budget. Now, as a re- as a retired police officer, which to me, public safety is more important. How can you just try to make a reference that hiring a police officer is better than having a judge? I mean, worse than having a judge. We could, public safety is more important. Okay, public safety, having cops. In that line, it also stated a reference to the meeting from public hearing in March. But it failed to tell you like the state, like Councilman Johnson stated, that a judge worked four days a month. That same judge that came to that public hearing. Some video, you can hear it, YouTube. Maybe they need to work more. It just, to, I, I, I give these guys credit having to deal with this. I've dealt with it. And the auditor, the spin on it. You know what the story is? Money was stolen, money was recovered and someone was arrested. Imagine you getting fraud and hoping your bank giving your money back and you want the person who did bribery arrested. That's what happened. That's exactly what happened. That is the story. No matter what spin you wanna put on. No matter. Public safety is important. You're against it. You shouldn't be involved in the town. Simple as that. I still trying to figure out how hiring a police officer is a bad thing. But someone one day explain that to me because I've been in office, I've been increasing the number of police officers to make sure that town of Walker residents are safe. You don't like it? Public safety is important. With that, I wanna wish everyone, uh, safe rest of the summer. As we go on, it's gonna get hot this week. Please stay. You know, hydrated, stay safe. With that, uh. Madam Clerk, you're up.
Well, the best thing I've heard so far tonight is that my back door is gonna be open. Because the removal did this building, John Ward, and I love him, so he won't mind saying it. I said, a man must have designed this building. The entrance is in the back. And I never get to see my people at tax time and I don't get to see my people when they go to the accessory office because they're all coming in the front door. So I am gonna be dreaming for the next eight weeks that that back door is online. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, couple of things, um, they all have mentioned a special election. On the side table is a copy of the sample ballot if you would like to see it. Um, again, it's eight AM to eight PM near town hall. Um, the backpacks for hope, I know Eric mentioned that. Um, we are hoping that folks will bring us some donations. Um, because that, um, they have a large list of young people that they help with those supplies. Um. We have new supply of EZ passes. It's that time of year, kids are going back to school and parents need the EZ passes. We were out of them for a little bit, but. We did, um, receive a new supply, so, so if you need an EZ pass, they're here at town hall. Um, the terror certificates have also been, um, we're grateful for the town board that that's part of the budget every year. Um, we have new supply of terror certificates. Um, they're twenty-five dollars for town residents and those are for, um, cats for spay and neuter. Um, Mr. Johnson thanked the DPW folks, um, who are all great people and do good work. And I always put a shout out for the clerical people here and in the court, um, because they all, um. As far as I know, they all work hard and get the job done. And social media, you should be like Louisa. Put Mr. Bojangles on there and the good cooking that you do, any one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You know, social media, everyone with a keyboard, you know, people are bullies, I call them. They won't have an adult conversation with, with someone. I always say that. I don't go on social media. I'm an adult. I can have a conversation with someone face-to-face. Whether we agree or disagree, that's the way it should be done as adults. You can't do that. You gotta hide behind a monitor and a keyboard. Oh, well.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Um, so to start with parks. Guys are, guys and girls, shout out Kim, um, they're working hard to maintain parks and buildings. Um, but also in between their normal maintenance activities, we're finding some time for upgrades. So like Eric, you mentioned, we're doing, um, some mold replacement. We're looking to get new benches, tables, picnic tables, garbage cans, um, and start. Upgrading everything that's in these parks because it's just getting old. Um, myself and Mike, who went through Circleville Park. We're gonna look to, in the fall, replace some bridge deckings, some, uh, railings. We're also gonna look to hopefully put in a new security shed out, uh, out of the front. Um, and then the dock replacement. So we had ripped out an old floating dock, uh, on, on the actual lake. So myself and Mike are working on getting a new one in. Um, minor replacements at community center, uh, like Eric had mentioned blinds. But one of the big things that we're trying to go after is there's actually grant funding up to fifty thousand dollars to be used at. Community center type buildings. Um, so what we're gonna look to do in our community center, uh, is replace the floors. And depending on how much money we have left, possibly buy some new tables. Um, along that, other grants we're going after, and I say we, I mean Michelle Baker, uh, because she's the entire reason that we get grant funding in the first place. Um, playground structure for patio. So that is, uh, a grant through community development. And then playground structure at Circle Drive, which, uh, that's a CFA grant. So both of those applications are ongoing. Um, don't really have a timeline on. When we're gonna get that before approved, how much money we're gonna get, you know, we'll keep everybody updated as it comes. Uh, as it was touched on, the Clean Street guys, they are absolute animals. Uh, I actually had a resident call me and tell me that I should give them the rest of the day off because they're working so hard. Um, which is just incredible. Um, I hope that we can continue that program forever. Uh, cause they are a huge help too, just when, you know, in between bulk pickup and then year round, I get calls about garbage somewhere. And I'll be able to send those guys out as long as they're here. Um, and, and it's a big help to kind of lighten the load for having to send a highway or a, a, you know, a parks guy out. Uh, as George mentioned, the sidewalk and the wall replacement up front. So don't really have much more to touch on other than. There will still be some spots on the front. Part of the building, you'll still be able to come in the main entrance and get down to the PD building. Pretty much they're just gonna block off that front section of the line, you know, right against the front of the building. It, it would be inside of a construction fence. So, um, if you don't mind walking around the building to get to the back, by all means, feel free. Otherwise, we're gonna try to push all the employees down to the bottom part of the parking lot to allow the public to, to park up there. Water sewer, like Eric talked about, again, um, just absolute workhorses. The water main break that we had on Ocean Turnpike. I got out there at probably two thirty in the afternoon. Um, it took us two to three hours just to figure out how to isolate that one spot. And I left at probably ten o'clock at night and woke up at six thirty and they were still working. And then two of those highway guys who were doing flagging went immediately from the water main break to paving. Um. Some of those guys were up like dang and a half. Um, and we gave them the option, by all means, go home. You wanna take a nap, whatever you wanna do, and they wanted to, they wanted to keep working. Um, so hats off to those guys. They're, they're doing a great job. One more grant funding that I don't wanna forget, Orange County Water Authority approved us for, um. a grant. So pretty much, they've gone through, done a bid process. They have hired a contractor, uh, that's gonna come in and do leak detection on, uh, twenty-five miles of our water mains throughout the town of Walkville at no cost to the town. Uh, so it's huge, knowing that we have aging infrastructure, water mains are, are not immune to that. Highway, um, cleaning up the meadows today. We're gonna finish cleaning up the meadows, um, next week, and we'll try to get in there for paving. Um, just keep an eye out on the street signs, and I believe we're gonna do mailers again, or at least letter your, your doors. Just so you know the dates that you should not be parking on the road, so that way you don't have to worry about having cars towed. Um, and just the last thing on that is when we're in rolling meadows and we're paving, these are cul-de-sacs, you understand that we're gonna be doing paving when people have to go to work, when they have to go drop their kids off. Just be patient. If the guys are paving right in front of your house and they've just left, but they ask you to wait, so that way they can go through and roll out the road, just give them five or ten minutes. We're gonna try to be out of your way as soon as we possibly can. Uh, and then, word to the wise, if we pave in front of your driveway or in that general area, and you're leaving your house, drive straight, do not turn the wheel on new pavement, otherwise you'll rut it. You, you know, we're doing one side of the road at a time, so you'd be able to drive straight and make your turn. And that's it.
Thank you, Chris. Chief?
Thank you, Supervisor. So, uh, members of the town board attended last month's police community council meeting, a great guest speaker. How many officials receives the senior agent charge of the local state FBI? We had a partnership with them, but on, on, eleven years now, I believe. What we have is tech that assigned to that unit, and they inherited resources. Until you realize the scope of some of the investigations we do, which you don't want to hear about until the arrest is made, you'll see the splash on the news that line, the big fraud arrest, there are big cases invested recently, a very, very, very serious pedophile was taken custody and charged at federal level. They provide great resources to us, and, um, there was a case, uh, part of on Brooklyn Avenue nineteen months ago, where we needed staff to help conduct canvass, and they offered fifty agents to run home. So, trading partnership with them for so many years, and, and I'm amazed, a great agent and supervisor, she was a great speaker last month. I, I get the supervisor all the time, but I strike someone, you know, hard, but it does a great job. Better than the umpire did in, uh, San Diego last, though, than anyone. By the way, the reason why she's on Facebook, she has a co-circuit in, in, in metropolitan, basically, so. I'm just, it's pretty minimal. Um, National Night Out speaks herself, it's the best event in counties, I think we can say, we said that, the last agreement that county officials do, is the largest event, please come and help and join us that night, the only thing we can is all the web. It's one night, we're committed to that night, there's no name of date, so we're gonna be there, um, that August day. Councilman Valentine shared great detail with the fact of the reaccreditation process. So we became accredited, because we wanted to show the community that we operated at a higher standard. I know what we do, the town board knows what we do, members of our police community council, represented by, by the President Salasino, he's gonna know that. But what accreditation does, it shows that we adhere to standards and maintain records to prove that we're operating on those standards that are at the highest level in New York State. Only the top twenty-five percent of approximately police agencies operate on these standards, because they're very difficult to meet. So, reaccreditation happens five years. It's been two years, right? We're coming up in the two-year mark, and we applied for our first accreditation. And going through accreditation process the first time, took us nineteen months to get ready. It was relatively simple, and, um, lack of a better term, that's probably the wrong term, I think. But when we prepared during those nineteen months, the review that was performed by the workers, the whole team of them, they came in here for three days, and went through every file we had, and the bottom, very frankly, they only reviewed one year's worth of records. So now when they come again in three years, they're going to review five years' worth. So for example, our department handles an average of twenty-five thousand incidents per year. Each incident, it results in at least one document. Some incidents result in five hundred documents. Um, but every incident results in at least one document, or will blow out of the end or a case report. So, over a five-year period, it's going to be a minimum of hundred twenty-five thousand files they're going to review, in addition to all those other things related to policies. Um, there's a great book, called eighty-twenty Principle, by Koch, I don't know if anybody knows it. I'm not doing this for Councilman, uh, Johnson's benefit, but there's this principle of the dynamic that to maintain a standard, either in science or business, you have to put in more effort to get the same results that you had in the past, and I'm not gonna, that's all I know about the modern. Um, it's the same with business, and the same with police departments, and accreditation process. We're gonna have to work that much harder with that much more material during, of course, and how it's left to be the next three years to maintain a standard, but that standard ensures that you're receiving the best quality service, because if all officers adhere to the policies, where they do at eighty-nine point nine point nine, uh, you're getting service that is only provided by the best twenty-five police agencies in the state. So it's a lot of work, it's a lot of work on our staff's clock. We've already begun the process, started having our first meetings, and our goal was overall now, and just providing regular services, so assuming it is, um, adhering to the standards, making sure we comply with the order, which is coming up like this. So so many specific, uh, goals that Councilman Valentine's kind enough to mention, I'm just touching them a little. Our record management system is integrated. It has to go, it's such a stuff, the whole county, it's the whole state, actually, state police included. Everyone's getting your record system scouted out, and we want something where you can communicate information with other police agencies. I'm in a sense, right? Rather than fax them a month before I wouldn't be able to send it to you. So, um, we identified a vendor alone with the county, they're rolling it out now, there's been about eighty agencies that have it. Uh, we're up, I think, next, so by September, October, there'll be tailored to our needs, and our record management system being in place. Uh, Eric said about the new technology, seeing some investigations. Up until a month ago, when we conducted a series of investigation, officers are using rulers to measure shell casings, the distance from the wall on the side of the room. So they go into, and they have a shooting with many shell casings, in some cases, unfortunately, they would have to measure the room, and then measure each shell casing's distance from each wall, and when they would go on staff, you know, in, in the proximity location. Well, people make mistakes with rulers, measuring definitely different measurements, you know, and sometimes the whole entire building, unfortunately, in some scenes. So this new system, it's all GPS. We get on the scene, they go about the computer, they place the device, and everything gets measured that we identify. And it's automatically updated every time the system logged on, it's foolproof system. It's not only gonna save time and money, but it's going to provide tactical information that's going to use in criminal prosecution of the, of cases, and withstand any challenges, but in defense. In contrast, the officer measuring, measuring one shell case from a night distance from a wall, and then the next attorney challenges the distance, the officer may have measured wrong, it goes to the credibility officer, risk, case not being, you know, proven sufficiently to get a conviction in a court. So, um, that's one of the examples. Firearm's training, the firearm's training, training simulator, the ones that George and I went to, with video cameras on them. Now it's all AI with these goggles, and it seems so real. We're gonna invite members of the town board, obviously, and members of the public, because you cannot solve coming to attend a session, because we want the public to see what officers experience. We don't make these things up, they're based on real life experiences that we, or the local police teams where national incidents have encountered, or national, we've been nationally have been encountered by police stations, so. We're gonna invite the public, we want you to see what we go through. It's not always easy. The incredible amount of strength officers use, that's just in our department, nationally on a regular basis, is incredible. I know I've been doing the jobs for several decades myself, and I've worked this many occasions. And then last city, we've remade the school resource officer program. We're gonna be a press conference forthcoming on that. It, it, it's so much more than we've ever done for youth in our town, right, since it's ever done. Seen a significant grant, two hundred and fifty thousand, started a program for a pilot, one school age different. And we'll roll it out in early twenty twenty-six, we'll measure results, and then if it's successful, we anticipate that we won't grant one coming at the state level, especially Senator Stupus's office. Two last things, speed trailer requests. We have a new speed trailer. So many years, we've had an old speed trailer, which is eighteen years old and required recharging. We sent it out to a location, faced it one direction, within three days, and it had to go back and recharge. The batteries were so old, we're afraid it was unsuccessful. Town was gracious enough to buy us a new speed trailer. And when we had the old speed trailer, it didn't work well. We had a load of requests. Now we have a new speed trailer, getting very few requests, only two over here. So there's new great detail, the variable message board. If this speeding or any concerns to your neighborhood, please ask, because we just deployed it on brown road, you have a black way to go up there. We're putting the word out there, please, just go over the site, speed trailer request from the town, and, and it'll come to us, and we'll get it out there. And then lastly, Mark, we've hooked up offline about that walk, provide, um, give you coverage for the nine eleven walk.
Yeah, definitely, um.
We talk, if it means.
Rosie, yeah, okay.
We'll cover all our, to cover it up, and if I wouldn't say.
Absolutely, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. As you can see, I'm a walk-up police department. Um, they're working hard, and, you know, it's the, the board's duty to provide the tools that they need to, you know, work, and, you know, that, that software, that, that you tool that they have to measure, um, crime scene is amazing, man. I'm glad we have it, and, uh, whoever's out here, whoever's listening, if you get a chance to come in, once they set up that, um, that, um, fat system, which is for, you see how they train, please come and see for yourself.
And that, the supervisor, they'll add, each one of those was obtained for a grant, it was fully paid for, and each one exceeded one hundred thousand dollars in costs initially for us, so the cost of the town did go on those charges last year.
Very good. I believe we got one of the largest brands in the state for a lot of this technology.
Yes.
So, great work by the police department. With that, we go into public comments, three minutes, I'm up. State your name.
Hello, um.
What is that green button?
Oh, the green button?
Yes, the green light.
I think it's, oh, it's my name. Um, good evening, um, on.
Like, it's just speak by move that mic, please.
Um, I'm here tonight, actually, I may only have the three minutes, so I'm gonna just get right into it. I learned a few things today, um. I'm here to raise a public health and safety concern that has been unaddressed.
I apologize, ma'am, this is, however, your name, please.
Teresa.
You know, last name?
Lusher.
Lusher?
Lusher.
Thank you.
M S C H E.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, I've made multiple attempts to seek help through the proper channels for this issue. A neighbor on our street is harboring a large number of outdoor cats. She had bragged three years ago about putting twenty kittens out, just putting them out. Okay, um, when she saw the look of disbelief on my face, she became defensive, claimed she needed born cats. And over the past few years, these cats have greatly multiplied in number. Some have been taken by fox and coyote, but those who survive have an extremely poor quality of life with unnecessary suffering due to neglect. She has no idea how many are being born in neighbors' yards, gardens, garages, et cetera. None of these cats are vaccinated. Um, they roam freely and have repeatedly come into my home now through my cat door with the unneutered males spraying inside my home. Um, it's not just a nuisance, it's a serious health risk. These poor cats spread disease that poses danger to pets, wildlife, and to humans, including toxoplasmosis, roundworm, hookworm, tapeworm, and not least of all rabies. She has claimed these cats are all her pets, as per Melanie, the previous animal control officer. I don't know the new one yet, but I'm gonna go into here and.
Walker costume.
Um, so, uh, I don't know, let's see the rabies vaccine certificates, maybe it is near state law. And I think you may remember that I've spoken to you a few times, and I don't know if you remember, so I've been to your office twice to speak to you, it's been two years. Because I had to take a, um, a year off to take care of my parents, but, um, I've also been to the ASPCA, the Orange County Board of Health, and even the New York State Board of Health. New York State Board of Health tells me it's up to the towns to handle these things individually. So, anyway, that's why I'm here tonight. Um, because nobody has helped me to, you know, implement a solution, and I just don't know what to do, so, um, the problem's not gone away, it's just getting worse. And many of my neighbors share my concern. A lot of us have had issues with the cats giving birth, you know, on their property, which, I mean, ugh, sorry, I just, you know, I love animals, but it's too much. Their suffering is just untenable, I can't. Um, but a lot of these people, my neighbors, are afraid to come forward, because the individuals in question regularly shooting firearms on their property makes people a little fearful of retaliation. These people, um, have also harassed me on many occasions as I try to walk my dogs, um, because of me trying to help the cats, and have had to call in police several times for my own safety. My cats have been to the vet several times with bite wounds, since she started throwing these cats out like trash. Um, every life should be valued, not just human. These cats are so hungry that they're under my bird feeders every day trying to hatch a meal, and they kill multiple birds daily. With the help of friends, I just need like another minute.
Sure.
With the help of friends, I've gotten twenty-eight cats and kittens born or out of my park, we neutered, vaccinated, and into good loving homes, which is what they all deserve, but money's tight, and I just can't, can't do it anymore by myself, and, um, I think we need to call in a professional trapping team, whatever, they need to be hired and take this over, you know, and it's, you know, the suffering of these animals is a definite priority, but also public safety and disease prevention. And just one or two facts before I go. Um, over the course of eight years, two unaltered cats, just one male and one female, over the course of eight years, can turn into two million cats. Two million cats. I think I get, I've left a flyer on everybody's spot. And also that, um, over ten thousand cats and dogs are put to death every day in this country, because they're earning enough homes, and the shelters are over flooded. It's ten thousand. Anybody have one or two pets at home that they love? Could you imagine ten thousand every day being put to death, because they're just earning enough homes, and then she's just breeding these cats like like it's nothing, and they need help. I pull into my street at night, and I see all these eyeballs at the end of the road, because it's just.
Where do you live, man?
I live in, um, Little Town, right on the edge of Circleville. So I have two minutes on the grand slam.
So you're on three oh two, or?
No, I'm on T S line, T I.
Right, so, gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I believe you spoke to our new animal control, so.
Well, I haven't been to the wing yet.
Someone, they come to my office, and they did make contact with the animal control, and I'm pretty sure my office gave, whatever came in, regardless of is in this situation, the proper channel, or what they need to do to get this fixed. So I don't know who it was, I had to speak to my staff. But they did speak to someone in my office, they did, someone did come in.
Recently?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause I'd like to know what's gone, because I feel hopeless.
Well, we, you know, with our animal control office, it just got appointed maybe five, four or five months ago. We did have a part-timer. Um, unfortunately, she wasn't, she's not with the town anymore, but so now, we do have a full-time ACO who has done a tremendous job, and I'm pretty sure.
I really look forward to hearing.
So, so Theresa, can you just leave your number?
I already, I already have her company, and we can't go before the meeting.
And we'll make sure, yes, we'll make sure of that.
You know, I don't even wanna be home anymore, because they're just everywhere, and it's like, I can't take care of them all.
Right. So, and there's, there's actually two avenues you can, um, or we can, because in our code, we actually have a number pets that you're allowed to have, all the pets.
Issue that, because, uh, I've heard, um, from the town, I don't remember exactly who it was that told me, but because the area is zoned for agriculture, that she can do what she wants.
Well.
You know?
RA is RA, but again, we have set limits on the animals and number of acres, and, uh, what you're not to have, it's in the code, so. The second thing is, is they are pets, they have to be, you know.
Vaccinated for.
Yeah, vaccinated for rabies and other stuff, and I've got proof, and I'm sure that there's that many that are not.
But there, there's also the caring of them.
For the kids underneath my shed. You know, and.
There's, there's two ways you can, you know, try and address it.
I just feel when we help.
So, okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. There's a pun there, but it wouldn't be appropriate.
Yeah, I don't, it's not a golf one, but it's like.
It was a cup.
Anyone on Zoom? Anyone else?
Yep.
Step right out, state your name.
My name is Deborah Harrell. I work, live in the town of Walkville, also work for the court. Most judges work part-time in other towns and cities. No one from the town board has ever asked the supervisor of the court the numbers of arrests along with vehicle and traffic cases. Your report does not include the state police or the sheriff's department. We have already booked through the end of December and have up one thousand three hundred cases that need to be booked, which will bring us to the end of April and the beginning of May. Uh, we are already very backlogged, and we can also transfer cases out to other cities, and we will use all that income. Um, and if you're hiring more police officers and crime is down, to me, that doesn't really make sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public safety is one of the most important things this time, and I'm impressed. You don't know that.
A crime stamp?
It's always good to have more police officers.
See, that's why it's down, if you have rational officers.
Right.
Not according to us. You don't have the numbers.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Anyone on Zoom?
Four times.
Uh, that being said, motion to adjourn. Sorry. All the favor?
All right.
Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight.